Red means it's hard or rocky. Red means that you're locked. Everyone can hear you.
Red is locked.
Thank you, and...
Good morning. Welcome to the New Mexico State Transportation Commission's special meeting, August 27, 2025. I want to call the meeting to order, and four of the five of the commissioners are present, and we have one by Zoom, which means that if we're on Zoom, and I'm going to be repetitious, and I'm going to have to ask for roll call vote on everything, so, and please, if you're on Zoom, identify yourself every time that you speak. So with that, can we get a roll call?
Chairman Adams?
Here.
Commissioner McElroy?
Here.
Commissioner Tanjes?
Here.
Commissioner Chinowitz?
Here.
Commissioner Taylor?
Here.
Commissioner Lundstrom?
Here.
Let the record show that all commissioners are present, and the forum has been established. If Dave Quintana, you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
We salute the flag of the United States of America. We salute our homeland, which stands on our nation under God, indivisible, liberate from injustice.
Commissioners, you had a chance to review the agenda. Is there any additions, deletions, or any other changes? If not, may I have a motion for approval?
Some of them.
I have a motion from Commissioner Tanjes, and a second
Second.
From Commissioner Chinowitz. Can I get a roll call vote for approval?
Chairman Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner McElroy?
Yes.
Commissioner Tanjes?
Yes.
Commissioner Chinowitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Lundstrom?
Yes.
That carries. Can we go to approval of the minutes? You've had a chance to review the minutes of the regular meeting of the State Transportation Commission of July 17, 2025. Is there a questions, comments? If not, what is the pleasure of this commission? Do I have a motion for approval?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion.
I have a motion from Commissioner Lundstrom to have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McElroy. Can I get a roll call for approval of the minutes of the July 17, 2025 District Four State Transportation Commission?
Chairman Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner McElroy?
Yes.
Commissioner Tanjes?
Yes.
Commissioner Chinowitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Lundstrom?
Yes.
Do we have any elected officials here?
None that signed in.
Okay, thank you. With that, we're going to, we'll go on to NMDOT staff, and I'll forego the commission introductions. I think everybody that's here at this meeting now already knows all of us. I'll turn it over to the secretary.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just introduce briefly our district engineers who are with us today, all six of them. Ms. Lisa Vega from District Six, Rhonda Lopez from District Five, Adam Romero in District Four, Isaac Chavez acting as DE in District Three for us, Francisco Sanchez in District Two, and Erin Chavaria. Also with us is our deputy secretaries Cooper and Moabed. And as I shared with you all earlier, we've, we've lost Mr. Hamilton to retirement, and John Newell is our new acting general counsel.
Welcome, John. And with that, I'll go on to welcome and remarks, and I just want to thank District Three for hosting us here today, and we'll be back here, I think, in a couple of weeks. So we look forward to coming back. So thank you to District Three, and welcome everybody who's attending this meeting. We appreciate you being here, and I'll, when we get to public comment, if anybody has anything to say, any comments, presentations, just feel free to come up. So again, thank you and welcome. And with that, we'll move on to public comment. Is there anybody that wants to come up and come before this commission? Then we'll move on to the secretary's report.
And before you start your report, I just wanted to bring up something. My phone blew up all the way over here all morning, early, like since four this morning, and we're having flooding, I know in Rio de Janeiro, but we're having flooding up in Mora, not only on private properties or county properties, but on our own state road, 434. As Adam updated me, it's washed out, and I wanted to see what we could do. I know he's got the chip seal crew there, he's got the heavy maintenance crew there, but I don't know if we need to bring in additional help, because right now what concerns me is that you can't pass, and there's a lot of people with health issues up there or in an emergency. They're going to have to loop all the way back into Angel Fire and back up through Cal. So, and then I'm getting called from residents, and I know we had some money, and I know it was running out now in August, but I, I'd just like to see what we can do for those people up there because it's especially on our road to make sure that we open it up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the... Okay, perfect. Thank you. So, Ms. Chairman, beginning on Monday, well, let me go back a while. We actually had the foresight anticipating some of the weather to have Ms. Romero, who's managing the, you know, fire flood recovery contract in Mora, to get that extended. So we did get that contract extended, and so we, we have it for at least an additional 90 days. We have been waiting because we've been burning through the funding faster than we've been getting reimbursed from FEMA, so we have a number of projects waiting for FEMA approval so that we can get reimbursed. And so instead of waiting for that funding, we made a request this morning for additional executive order funding so that we can go to work on both county roads and get contractor support for 434 and any other state roads that are impacted. On Monday of this week, we, we deployed to assist the county, our contractors, SVI, to a couple of county locations. One of them, Christmas Tree Canyon, and the other one was Rio de la Casa, I believe, to make sure that they had, that residents there could get an out for services and food and other necessary, other necessities. And so as soon as we get that executive order support, we can increase our purchase orders and unleash our fire flood recovery contractors to go and get at some of those troubled spots. I will say, Mr. Chairman, that we'll still have to coordinate some emergency response for, for services with Homeland Security, because we still need waters to subside in some of those areas before we can just start pulling material and restoring access. And so in the interim, we'll want to make sure that National Guard and Homeland Security is ensuring that until we can get in there, that the residents on either side have quick access to services. And then on the Rio de Janeiro side, we've been in a support role there, mostly for the village of Rio de Janeiro. Otherwise, Department of Homeland, Homeland Security has been managing the emergency response contractor support in Lincoln County.
I just found out this morning from other people, not from our people, that you had gotten funding for Christmas Tree, and so I would like to be informed of what's going on there because I'm getting calls from residents, from the county manager and everybody, and I have no clue that we had even, we were even in there doing anything. And so, I mean, the first person they call is me, and, and I'd just like to have some information as far as what's going on. And as far as 434, I don't know if we can, we need to bring in additional, I mean, if we don't have money to bring in a contract or anything, if we don't have money, if we can bring additional resources of other, from other districts to, to help, I mean, to get that road open. And that, that road, I've looked at it, it needs bigger culverts, and Adam says that there's a project that's coming up that's going to address that, correct? Because it's going to continue to happen there, and the rain has been hitting every, every day, and I don't see it, just like in Rio de Janeiro, I don't see it subsiding anytime soon. So if I can stay updated on what's happening down there, I can at least let people know that we're responding in some, in some manner. So, well, it's good to hear. So can you, can we coordinate and check to see if he needs additional help or how we can get people in there?
Sure, Ms. Chairman. Yeah, we consulted with Adam this morning, and that's what prompted the ask for additional EO funding, because even though it's our road, we're going to need the support there with contractors. And so we're hoping to have that by the end of the day. Our support at Christmas Tree Canyon and other county roads, they, we didn't get funding for those. We basically tore into the funding we had available for private property debris removal and just shifted the priority over to those roads at the request of the county. And so so far, it's just been, you know, D4 and our contractor support being really nimble. We send them where we need them, and we do that hopeful that our monitors can build those projects so that they're reimbursable. Otherwise, they're not, but the community needs help either way, so.
Thank you.
Just a couple of other things, Mr. Chairman. As you all know, we're in the midst of interim committee season, and so a number of us have, have been presenting. We did presentations, myself and our chief economist at Revenue Stabilization Tax Policy Committee in eight 14, all focused on funding for transportation infrastructure. We also did presentations at TIERs the week of eight, 21 through 22, presentations on Target Zero, our D1 projects, D6 priorities, our major construction priorities, and of course, all of that rolled into our funding efforts for the upcoming session. And so we continue to talk with legislators about our need, the gap in funding versus resources, and more education about our bonding bill and efforts in that regard. And then, of course, we'll have a TIERs meeting at least every single month, and we're expected to be at a LFC hearing for Legstat in the next couple of months. I know you all get these updates and invites. We're, we've celebrated a couple of project milestones. We play a major role in the Las Lunas I-25 interchange project, $180 million project just south of here. We're also the lead on that federal grant award, supported by state funding. As you all know, we expect that the village will, will come to you soon for action on a CIB loan for project oversight there. And so we broke ground on that project a couple of weeks ago with Governor Luhan Grisham.
Can I, can I stop you there? I think it was about a year and a half ago that, at the, at my request and the commission's request, is that all commissioners be invited to any ribbon cutting, groundbreaking. I got calls on the one in Las Lunas, which you mentioned. I never even knew it was happening. They had wanted to meet with me on some stuff. I had no clue. The one in Gallup, I got one day notice. I don't know if any of the other commissioners were invited. I think we had something up in, I found out in John's area, right, last week or week ago?
No, there wasn't anything in our area, but I myself wasn't invited to these.
I was just hoping the future that any of those activities, that every commissioner be invited, and it's up to them whether they can attend or not. But I think it's important that they be there. When we get together here, we're asked to approve this and approve that and all this, and all this funding that goes out, we approve. And then we're not even, I didn't, I didn't get the invite. So I don't know if I was the only one that didn't get the invite to Las Lunas and some of these others, but I, I never got.
Mr. Chair, I, I would like to add that, you know, and Lisa and I and Ricky have talked about that, about stuff in my area. I'll do my dangest to get there, you know, and because people talk to us, you know that, they're always talking to us. Any kind of invite around the state, again, I'm sure the commissioners would love to be involved with that. In Las Lunas, the same thing, I go down there a lot, I'm down there a lot too. So, and Hillman and I have talked about that, just an invite, a little couple, two, three days, the best you can do, we'd appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members, you're correct, and I'm upset that you didn't get the invite to that because you've already made it clear. And so I'll, I'll figure out why, but you're absolutely correct that a commitment was made that we would do that. With regards to the second one in Gallup, you're right, I think we all got a couple of days' notice. It was a very kind of shotgun event, to be sure. And so we did kind of, with Lisa's help, get that event planned in about a day and a half, and we were fortunate to leverage the governor's availability to, to cut the ribbon on, on that project. And I thank Commissioner for being there as well. So we expect to have several more of these. I think it's important for us to show New Mexico and, and our stakeholders that we, that we put money into the community on a regular basis. And so we'll, we'll keep pushing through those.
I appreciate that because although it seems like only the commissioner in that, wherever the activities happen is getting invited, I don't know why. We don't only represent our district, we represent the whole state. And when we come over here and we make motions to approve and not approve funding or whatever it is, it's, it's not for, we don't just have the commissioner from that district approve it, it's got to come through the whole thing. I think it's just, you know, courtesy, and, and we might not make them all, but I would have gone to the one in Las Lunas. I, I didn't have a clue.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I may, I, I want to give some kudos to Lisa and her staff and Ricky. They, they did a good job under the tight conditions, talking to the President of the Nation, all those dignitaries, they were very, very impressed. Lisa, very good job with the short time that you had. These guys were still running hand tools when people were on the, on the flatbed, right? I mean, they were still making stuff. So again, kudos to Lisa and her group over there. Thank you, Ricky.
So, thank you.
No, I understand, and again, agree. I just want to share this, it's, it's an ongoing topic. I know it's been a challenge in District Six for many, many years, and now it's becoming a growing challenge in District One, and it's the need for dust storm mitigation in, in a, in very short order. We've had, over the last few months, dust storms throughout District One that have caused several closures, several crashes, we've had some fatalities, one involving law enforcement officers as well. It's becoming, it's becoming a, a growing issue for a number of reasons. I think we see changing weather patterns, but we're also seeing a lot of property development down in that area. And so we think it's part of the site readiness development, the, the clearing of property, getting ready for vertical construction that with the, combined with the winds, we, we have some challenges. And recently, at a legislative committee, we were asked to really kind of take an action there, and we may even, to get some stakeholder interest here is perhaps, again, request some executive declarations for that challenge and see what we can do in partnership with the counties. As you all know, this will impact BLM, public right of way, private properties, but DOT is going to play a role in the mitigation efforts, but we've also been asked to play a role in coordinating emergency response with Department of Homeland Security so that when the events happen, everybody's coordinated and, and we have really good communication with the, the general public. Just want to share a couple of save the dates. I believe we have D3 Safety Service Awards here tomorrow, and we invite you all to be here if you can. We have our NM Transportation Safety Summit and Tribal Transportation Safety Summits, September 16 through 17, also here, which is our second convening of industry prevention professionals and community leaders, all aimed at focus, all focused on eliminate traffic-related fatalities on our roadways. I did want to share that in the past, I've shared that we were working on creating a pipeline training program, which was not easy whatsoever. As you all are aware, we do have training programs that support our existing staff to become certified and trained after they're hired. What we did was focus a program that actually trains potential staff so that they can come work for us, where they wouldn't otherwise be qualified. So we partnered with Workforce Solutions and CNM to create a program that certifies participants in heavy equipment, CDL, Flagler, NOSHA certifications. We've hired already contingently, contingent on their completion, nine out of the 15 participants in areas in patrols like Bloomfield, Narvise, Artesia, North Urban, Hobbs, Carlsbad. So I believe they'll be finishing up their training at the end of September, and then we'll deploy. we'll deploy all those with a contingent hire off to their patrols. Big update, I've been keeping you all in the loop, going back to the session about the Border Highway Connector project down in District One. The, the project there, of course, new road infrastructure connecting P de Minis, essentially the I-10, creating a freight corridor for traffic in and out of the Santa Teresa Port of Entry. Also would support property development along that alignment. It's a project that's costing a hundred and seventy million dollars for which we received a forty-five million dollar infra grant back in 2022. At the time, it was expected the project would cost eighty million and so, we were really committed to thirty-five million of non-federal state support. Right now, with the project cost escalations, we're in need of a hundred and twenty-five million of non-federal match to get that project obligated and we're working to do that by September sixteenth. As you're all aware, we were, we had listed this project as a priority in those projects that would be supported by House Bill 145, our bonding bill. And even prior to that, it was our priority going into the session with non-recurring cash appropriations from the legislature. None of that materialized, as you all know, in the 2025 legislative session, so we've been working along with the governor's office to create a, a funding strategy over the next few weeks that we believe Federal Highway Administration can consider and approve so that we can get that grant obligation agreement signed in time so that, that forty-five million in federal funds is not compromised. We're looking ultimately at a funding strategy for the right now and ultimately swapping that strategy with state appropriations in the immediate future. And so, we are entertaining some ideas that could consist, that could require State Transportation Commission review, consideration and action between now and September sixteenth. And so, I know that's a short timeline infused to, to get things in front of you all, but again, it isn't a short notice as much as it is an ongoing, you know, process of identify, eliminate, adopt strategies for, for funding this project. And so, I'll keep you all updated on that and answer any questions that you have along the way and certainly when, and should the time come for commission action, we'll, we'll kind of weigh all those things out together. So, that's all I have now, Chairman, and answer any questions that you have.
Any questions from fellow commissioners?
I've got a, I guess, a comment on the first item that you had regarding the TIERs meeting, the interim committee, the Transportation Infrastructure Revenue Committee that set up the legislature. And obviously, they're going around the state in different, different locations. Last week, they were in Deming in Silver City. I took the time to go ahead and, and attend that and I thought it was, it's a pretty informative, pretty informative meetings, especially you get a good feel what the local governments are concerned with and, and that's kind of where the dust storm mitigation issue was, was brought forward again. And then, some of the needs that they have in their community. So, I would recommend to the other commissioners, if this is in your area at some point, that I think it'd be a good idea to attend, at least if not, you know, the full, full sessions, at least part of it, kind of hear the local, the local governments' concerns and kind of also see some of the, the work that our own staff does in presenting, I think, important items that the department's working on, like the issue with the funding. Obviously, we don't have enough funding and I think the presentation that you did, Rick, with the economists, I think, was, was good. I think, I think well received by the, by the committee. All the, all of the, the Target Zero initiatives that Amy Whitfield did, I thought was, was a good presentation. The districts obviously did a, did a good job again with, with their presentation, Six and, and District One. David had a good, good presentation on the construction priorities and the projects that were funded and the projects that aren't funded. I think that, that presented something that he didn't get any questions, so, you know, he's, he's batting a thousand as a, as a hitter there for presentations, so congratulations, Dave, on that. But I think everybody was ready, was kind of ready to go and finish up the meeting, so, I mean, that may have been part of the, part of the thing that happened there, so don't get a big head, Dave. But anyway, I mean, I just wanted to bring that up. I thought, I think the next one is in Rio de Janeiro and I think that there's another one I saw in Los Alamos, so if the commissioners in those areas are, can make some of those, I think, I think it's a good idea. And then, LFCs in your area or whatever, I think that wouldn't be a bad idea, especially if we're, we're asked to present, just to show our face and show our support for our staff and, and our department. Just a comment I wanted to make. I guess one other thing, just a question on the Border Highway Connector. Is there a reason, I know you're, you're going after the entire obligation here for the, for the project and, you know, I kind of have an idea why you're doing that, but I didn't know if it'd be, it would behoove us to just go after like a phased approach, at least to cover the forty-five million dollar infra grant? If that was even discussed or brought up, Secretary? I just, just kind of commenting and questioning at the same time.
Great question. The answer to your question is, this is the phased approach, Commissioner. We actually were working at building out a four lane. So, first of all, the project will take us all the way to I-10 and this first phase of the project will take us into Sunland Park. That project in and of itself has been phased to provide the infrastructure for a four lane road, but only completing two of them at this point. And so, believe it or not, the increase in project costs from eighty million to a hundred and seventy million is with a reduced scope from the original grant proposal that was submitted. And so, we'll later have to come back when we see the volume to warrant the additional two lanes in addition to the second phase, which will be the connection to I-10.
Okay, but I guess what I, what I was, what I was talking about, you've got a nine-mile corridor there. You know, if the forty-five million, if we break up that project into, say, a five-mile section before we get to the railroad crossing, if we just gain money for that, I guess that's, that was my, my thought, but.
And Commissioner, Chairman Commissioner, even better idea, the, the challenge is getting that designed and ready in time for the September sixteenth obligation deadline is what really forced us to, to really focus in on that reduced scope on this first phase. And so, and then to accept the forty-five million, we're still on the hook for the original non-federal match, right? The percentage amount. And so, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm gonna lean to Dave or Ms. Peralta, we're still on the hook now for sixty-five million either way of non-federal match because we have to match the percentage of the total cost of this phase.
CEO, Mr. Chair, Commissioner McElroy, Secretary, thank you. And the real, the real reason is, we needed to take that entire nine miles as well, is we need logical termini. So, we need to make sure that we're going from New Mexico route to another New Mexico route to ensure that we're not building a road to nowhere. So, the environmental documentation requires us to make sure that we do have logical termini on either end of it. So, Secretary's point, it's phased, unfortunately, this is a big phase.
Okay, thank you.
With that, is there any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Chinowitz.
Thank you, Chairman Adams. I just wanna reiterate what Commissioner McElroy said. I think it is, I, I've attended some of those TIERs meetings when they're here in our district and I just would like to encourage our staff to keep us informed of those. I, I go into the legislative calendar and figure that out by myself, but I think it would be really nice if our staff could also just keep us aware and on top of those opportunities so that we can be out there supporting the department and our staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Secretary, on your report, you put a lot of the activities that are gonna be happening, like the summits and all that, and had you not put them in your report that you submitted before here, I would not have a clue as to what's going on. And I think most of the commissioners don't either, so I think Commissioner Chinowitz brings up a good point is, if there's going to be a TIERs meeting, if there's gonna be a summit that you think, Commissioner, there's, there's a lot of meetings you have that have nothing to do with commissioners. But I, I guess, getting back to the ribbon cuttings and all that, we're not getting any information as far as activities that are, that are going on. And I've attended a couple of the TIERs meetings when they're in Vegas. Right now, I don't know when the next one is and I haven't even looked on the website, so you can look into, someone, there has to be someone that can send us an update. I appreciate it, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Chinowitz. Is that all you have?
It is.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to go on to the action items. And Clarissa, and I, Clarissa, I really wanna commend you because you gave, gave us that information way ahead of time, gave us a chance to review it. We got a little mix-up up in D4 and we were able to solve it and I appreciate that and so, thank you for submitting your, your, your information very, very promptly and very early.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm here this morning to present the FY26 Transportation Project Fund recommendations. This year, our Transportation Project Fund budget was one hundred and two million, seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And this amount is including total cost for local entities that identified that they would be interested in applying for our match waiver program to cover their five percent. So, if you can turn to page twenty-three and twenty-four of your commission booklets, you'll find a list of our FY26 recommended, recommended new projects. And as I mentioned before, there is a match waiver intent column, so if the entity marked yes on that, we did include total cost in that amount. With that, I stand for any questions.
You all had a chance to review this, the recommendations. Is there any comments, changes, questions? If not, what is your recommendation?
Commissioners, I recommend approval of the projects as presented to you all and thank you because I know you all play a role in the selection ultimately, so hopefully they're, you know, that they support your priorities as well.
And, and just like on, on the change that we had, just so that you know, all the recommendations that were on there that went in were recommended by our staff over there and we reviewed them and we went with the recommendations.
Yes, everything was recommended by the districts and the district engineers.
So, with that, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Tanjes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Chinowitz. Can I get a roll call vote?
Chairman Adams?
Here, I mean, not here, yes.
Commissioner McElroy?
Yes.
Commissioner Tanjes?
Yes.
Commissioner Chinowitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Lundstrom?
Yes, thank you. And we'll go on to FY26, Bar Number One, Transportation Project Funding, Santa Fe County FY25 Project.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm here to present Bar Number One for the Transportation Project Fund. An FY26 bar is required to increase the Transportation Project Fund Budget Authority in Category 400 by two million, eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, forty-eight dollars. This funding will cover encumbered FY25 TPF project costs for the City of Santa Fe and Santa Fe County due to delays in executing their grant agreements prior to the close of FY25. The allocation is as follows: City of Santa Fe, two million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, and Santa Fe County, six hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, forty-eight. The Transportation Project Fund will support this bar request.
So, you do have the money to support it?
Yes.
Okay, you heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion for approval of FY26, Bar Number One, Transportation Project Funding, Project Extension? I have a motion.
Move for approval?
I have a motion by Commissioner McElroy, I have a second.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Second by Commissioner Lundstrom. Can I get a roll call?
Chairman Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner McElroy?
Yes.
Commissioner Tanjes?
Yes.
Commissioner Chinowitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor? Commissioner Taylor?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Lundstrom?
Yes. That passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we'll go into the NEVI funding and we'll have April Narango.
Good morning, welcome. Special Projects Division, and I'm here to present the FY26 Budget Authorization Request. It's required to increase the budget authority in grant services, which is under Category 400, for the project design and construction program by eight million, six hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six. This total includes six million, six hundred and forty-one, five hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars in federal funds and two million, twenty-four, three hundred and sixty-five in matching funds, which will be provided by the NEVI awardees. These funds will support the implementation of the National Electric Vehicle Infrastructure, the NEVI program, established by the Federal Highway Administration. The program aims to strategically deploy electric vehicle charging, infrastructure and development and interconnect network to enhance data collection access and system reliability. I stand for any questions and I respectfully ask for your approval.
Any questions from fellow commissioners?
I actually do have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Chinowitz.
Thank you. Can you tell us, is this an increase in capacity, that you're getting more applications than you expected? What, what is the reason for the increased grant authority?
So, this is for the FY26. We were awarded NEVI funds previously and we prevailed, we went through the lawsuit, we prevailed. And so, now this is just to support the entire build-out of the infrastructure continuing.
Any other questions from fellow commissioners? Now, what is the pleasure of this commission? No motion, so I guess it's gonna die from a lack of a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we accept this, this proposal.
I have a motion from Commissioner Lundstrom. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second the motion.
I have a second from Commissioner Taylor and McElroy. Can I get a roll call vote?
Chairman Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner McElroy?
Yes.
Commissioner Tanjes?
Yes.
Commissioner Chinowitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Lundstrom?
Yes.
That carries unanimously.
Thank you.
We'll go on now to the budget request, John Tennyson.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commission, Secretary.
Good morning, welcome, John.
I am here to present the FY27 Budget Request. Along with me, I have my chief economist, Michael Morrison. So, we'll start off, he will give you guys what our revenue forecast is gonna look like for the upcoming years and then I'll go into the budget itself.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Going over our road fund forecast, this is our, one of two annual forecasts we produce for July, the other one will be in January, just before the budget is, the FY27 budget is set. If we're looking first on FY26 recurring road fund revenue, that's gonna be on line eighteen. That's gonna be, we have an increase of twelve million over the FY25 budget there. Oh, it's right up on the screen there for a second. And then additionally, if you look at for FY27, of more interest, we do have an increase of eight and a half million dollars, eight and a half million over the FY26 Legislative Budget Estimate. And that is mainly driven by increases in our gasoline and special fuel taxes. Do you see a decline, if you look at in the column that says labeled P minus N, you'll see there's a decline in both our weight distance and our vehicle registration that's expected in that case. And I do apologize, I did forget to mention, this is, the producing this forecast was a joint effort by myself and my two other economists, Dr. Cuaco Boache and Dr. Disupsiom. If we're looking at, onto the next slide, go to the total funds, total state revenues, sorry. And that, we're looking at for FY27, an increase of about eleven million dollars over the FY26 Legislative Budget Estimate. And then, in the following, yes, sir. And following slide, we do have a short graph, I'm sure you've seen this before, just looking at our top four revenues going forward into our forecast and in the And in the following slide, our, we call our finger chart, that has just a breakdown of our tax, the distributions for the different tax programs that feed into the road fund. Okay, I'll pass it over to John now.
All right, now the fun part. Okay, so the next slide will show the breakdown of how our requests will look coming into this upcoming legislative session. So the FY twenty-seven budget request will comprise of one point two eight billion dollars, which is a twenty-nine point nine million decrease from the FY twenty-six operating budget. Going over to column A, you'll see what our FY twenty-six operating budget was. Compare that against column B, which is what our budget request is, and column C is the dollar change. Starting at the top, you have your personal services and employee benefits. We started at two fifty-six point five million dollars. Compare that against what we're going into the request for two hundred and forty-two, round off to two hundred and forty-three point million dollars. There's a difference, dollar change of thirteen point five million dollars. Contractual services, we had a operating budget of six hundred and seventy-four point three million dollars. We were going into the request with a six hundred and sixty-five point four million dollar request, dollar change of eight point nine million dollars. And in our category fours, we have three hundred and seventy-nine point nine million dollars in our operating budget. The request will comprise of three hundred and seventy-two point three million dollars, a dollar change of seven point five million dollars. Overall, we are currently in the FY twenty-six operating budget. We are currently operating at one point three billion dollars. The request, again, will be at one point two eight million dollars, dollar change difference of twenty-nine point nine million dollar difference. Going into the revenue pieces, the appropriation is supported by five hundred and seventy-point four million dollars of the State Road Fund, one hundred and seven point five million of the restricted fund, nine point three million from transfers from TRD and DFA, three point five million of highway infrastructure fund balance, and five hundred and ninety million of federal revenue. Going over the program budgets, the P five six-two program will comprise of eight hundred and twelve million dollars. The highway operations will comprise of three hundred and eight point two million dollars. Business support will be supported by fifty-eight point one million dollars, and the modal program will be supported by one hundred and two point four million dollars. Again, comparing the request against the operating budget, you'll see that the state revenue had increased by eight point five million dollars. Restricted revenue increased by two point six million dollars. Transfers from TRD and DFA did decrease by a million dollars. We did have an elimination of forty-three point million of State Road Fund and restricted fund balance. And then we had an elimination of a one-time transfer from the Healthcare Affordability Act. We did have our federal revenue increased by ten point five million dollars, which is a two percent increase from our FY twenty-six operating budget. A few things to note, that our debt increased by eleven point three million dollars. The debt of the payment this year will be about one hundred and twenty-two million. After that, it does go back down to the one hundred and eleven million. So this will be one time where we do see it go up for this FY twenty-seven year, and then after that, it goes back down. Just to highlight again, that we had a one million dollar decrease on transfers from DFA and TRD. And then just to kind of give you a brief synopsis, the forty-three million dollars deduction for State Road Fund balance and the restricted fund balance, that is a yearly thing that we do in the request. We kind of take away our fund balances and kind of go based off of what our revenues look like. State Road Fund, federal restricted revenues. And then when we go through negotiations with DFA and LFC during the January legislative process, we see where we're at with our funding. And then we kind of add that fund balance back in based upon what projections we see. After that, if you want, I can go into further detail as far as what each program has for their budget. Would you like me to do that, Mr. Chair?
Fellow Commissioners, do you want him to summarize like he did, or do you want to go through the whole thing?
Of each program?
Yeah, just a summary, not, I don't have to go into detail.
Yeah, for sure. So the P five six-two project design and construction, like I said, is eight hundred and twelve million. It's about an eight point seven million dollar decrease from the operating budget. Highlighted items here is the, like I mentioned, the one hundred and twenty-two point one million of debt service. We have five hundred and forty-four point six million going in construction projects, which is federal and state. Twenty-nine million will be for the local government road fund, and fifty-five point eight million will go to the Transportation Project Fund. Moving on, we have P five six-three, which is our highway operations. That will be at three hundred and eight point two million, which is a fifteen million dollar decrease from the FY twenty-six operating budget. Highlighted items here are forty-nine point one million for contract maintenance, six point eight million for rest area maintenance and improvements, eleven point three million for striping, thirty-two point seven million for field supplies, ten million will go to equipment, and the two point seven million will go to radio communications for DO-IT. P five six-four will have a fifty-eight point one million dollar budget. This is a seven hundred and thirty-five point eight thousand increase from the FY twenty-six operating budget. Highlighted items here are eleven point eight million are for GSD risk rate costs, which this one, we did have a higher increase of about five point one million dollars based upon the GSD liability rates. Five million will go to the DO-IT IT rate costs. Twelve point one million will be built into the Information Technology Division. Three point five million will go to Buildings and Grounds, and one point two million will be in the Office of the Secretary. And finally, for the modal program, that is a hundred and two point four million, which is a six point nine million decrease from the FY twenty-six operating budget. Highlighted items on this one is eleven point four million will go to the Aviation Division, nine million will be for the ports of entry, twenty-four point five million for traffic safety, fifty-four point two million for Transit and Rail, and finally, three point three million will be going to the Transportation Regulation Bureau. And with that, I stand for any questions that you may have.
So are you recommending a healthy budget request?
For what our revenues are projecting, yes, sir. Mr. Chair.
Any other questions from fellow Commissioners? Any comments? If not, do I have a motion for the FY twenty-seven approval of budget request?
I make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we approve this, this budget proposal.
We have a motion from Commissioner Lundstrom.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McElroy. Roll call.
Chairman Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner McElroy?
Yes.
Commissioner Tanjes?
Yes.
Commissioner Chinowitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Lundstrom?
Yes.
That carries unanimously.
Mr. Chair, Commission, thank you very much.
And thank your staff.
I will, thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we'll go on to the vacancy report.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Bringing you this report, it fits hand in glove with the budget that you just approved, but the question was asked by Commissioner McElroy about what the strategy is for filling vacancies of the Department of Transportation. And as I think I've mentioned before, that, you know, this has been an ongoing challenge for us for a number of reasons, and we're going to go over them and then share with you some of how we're going to move through them. And so with me, of course, is Deputy Secretary Jessica Cooper, and we just have a few slides, and then we'll answer whatever questions you might have. Go on to the first one, please. This is kind of a tell-all slide here. The top one talks about our vacancy rate over the course of the last three years. As you all know, I believe our total FTE is just over twenty-five hundred. Even getting like an exact number gets tricky sometimes, but just over twenty-five hundred. And so, as you're aware, you know, every ten percent, two hundred and fifty employees. And so you'll see that we had a peak in twenty twenty-three, and we did a number of things intentionally, some of which we'll talk about in just a little bit, to really move the needle there. I want to be clear that we also track vacancy reports by divisions at, at the agency and certainly by transportation districts. And so even though you see an overall vacancy rate, most recently at fourteen point six percent, we do have some areas with a vacancy rate above sixteen, seventeen percent. And there, of course, we wrangle with mostly some competitiveness in the industry, in the region, that makes it difficult. For example, you know, a few years ago, I think District Two in particular was an area that we struggled, given what the oilfield work was, work was paying workers. And now we struggle in particularly in District Five and in District Three. And there, again, the job opportunities available between the counties in that region, the federal laboratories in that region, and things like that, make it tricky for us to keep workers in a number of key positions. Now, the table at the bottom shows the growth in our overall payroll, benefits, and overtime budget going back to that same period. Now, I want you to keep in mind that that sixty-eight million dollar increase was not what it cost to fill those positions. There's been a number of things that have happened over that time, and we'll talk about them in the next slide, but just to give you quick figures, that's a sixty-eight million dollar increase over that short period of time. It represents a thirty-six percent increase to the cost of personnel, benefits, and overtime budget. So on the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about things that have contributed to that. And so, we did a little bit. That's the intentional steps to increasing pay and improve recruitment and retention. So one of them was, is we identified some positions that we wanted to fill quickly, that we wanted to kind of standardize for the purposes of appropriate placement, internal alignment, we created pay matrices, which is essentially a matrix that allows for us to take a certain position, qualified years of experience, plug them into a chart, and then make very quick offer letters to expedite the hiring process, but to ensure internal alignment. And our engineer text is a perfect example of a pay matrix that we rolled out across the state. We also, and you all are aware, we issued a ten percent pay increase for all of our employees that were being paid through the engineering salary schedule a couple of years ago. And so this was a measure to, to become extremely competitive with the private sector on our engineering professionals, not just licensed engineers, but all engineering professionals at the district and general office. And so that was compounded with a three percent legislative increase that we gave at the beginning of FY twenty-five. We also rolled out the NMDOT longevity pay program, which essentially paid, up until this fiscal year, it was a DOT program that paid workers for several milestones through thirty-five years of service at the end of the calendar year. This program has now been adopted as a negotiated program for all executive state agencies. And the only real difference, fundamental difference, is that it's now amateurized over the twenty-six pay periods in the payroll, right? And so the, the unique DOT program no longer exists, and instead, it's a statewide program that exists for all eligible workers. We also rolled out the referral bonus program, which had an indirect cost impact. What we did essentially was allow employees to refer external workers to DOT if they were hired, then they were granted leave as a benefit for assisting in the recruitment. And then we also rolled out the Alternative Work Site Program as a measure to minimize commuting time for our workers. We instituted alternative work sites in Districts one, two, three, and the general office, I believe, and we have some going on also with D six. Do we have, yeah, D six. Yeah. And in D four, we created space there as well. And so that program allows for workers to split their commuting time in a single pay period by fifty percent. And so that was a retention measure that we did invest in because there were sites within our existing office space that we had to ramp up with computers, set them up for cubicle space, workspace, et cetera. So those were measures that we implemented that have certainly contributed to the increase in payroll. The, there's some other internal factors that affected personnel costs, and these are some of the things that we, that you kind of learn as you go. One of them was agency-level budgeting for funding vacancies. So when I first came to the agency, because we were less concerned with our expenditures at the time, what we were essentially doing was managing the filling of vacancies at a very high level. In fact, at some point, it was a high-level leadership committee that would really weigh in on which personnel actions in general were priority and which were not. And so what we want to do is move away from that high level, which can make it difficult to monitor in very real time how much new revenue expenditures we're adding to our payroll expenditures is. We're working on a budget by division that empowers managers to essentially say, I know what it costs to pay for the workers I have now. I'm going to have vacancies that are going to be budgeted. They're going to give me budget for those vacancies, and as a manager, I can fill them, and I'll know from looking at my own budget, how much budget I have to do what I need to do from a personnel perspective, at the districts, at a division level, et cetera.
Let me, let me ask you a question. So right now, you know, you know, we did, we did the ten percent increase for professional engineers and all that stuff. Did that impact our, our overall budget as far as, is it going to affect vacancies? Because you're saying now that you're going to allow people to, to make the decision whether or not they have the budget to, to hire or not to hire. And, and my question comes in is that, are we in a situation right now where we're having to watch our budget on vacancies? Okay, that, that being said, let me jump to my next question. I would hope, I would hope, a couple of things that I would hope. Number one is that we fill essential positions first, and that those be identified. We have crews right now, we have snow coming up, and if we don't have the, the personnel or the vacancies filled in those, in those patrols, then we're going to be short, which means we're not out cleaning roads and doing that stuff. So what I'm saying is if we have a, if we have positions that can be, I'm not saying done away with, but if you're filling essential positions and then as money becomes available, you fill others, that that be a priority because of construction, we have projects going on, we can't afford to be without inspectors and stuff of that nature. So I think we have to be very, 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 very innovative in trying to control that. Secondly, I think, I don't know if you're already doing it, but if we're getting vacancies, whether it's at the general office, whether it's at a, wherever, that, again, we look at essential positions. Because it's a, and I'm going to get into this when you're done with your thing. Right now, we're not mowing, we're not doing a lot of things out on the roadway. We're not doing a lot of stuff, and every time I ask, it's, it's either that all the mowers are broke down, or that we don't have enough people, or that there are other places. I understand emergencies come up, just like the one we have right now in Mora and Rio de Oso, so that takes away. But there's ways to get around that because we, we have special crews, and if we need to, we could even, but we need to look at that budget, and, and I'll get into the rest of it when you're done with this, but I just hope that essential positions are being, are being filled before we're filling other positions. And, and then the other thing that comes up on these vacancies, and I've discussed it with you before, is that I'm getting a lot of calls that are saying, we're trying to fill vacancies, and we submit them, and then they're getting held up. And I don't know whether they're getting held up at the GO or they're getting held up at SPO. That I don't, I have no idea. But somewhere, it's, it's not a fluent flow to, and then we even do these, where we go and we do these onsite hirings and stuff like that. So I don't know how, we can't be moving. The other thing is somebody gets a promotion, and it takes six months, and in the meantime, they leave. That's part of the recruitment and retention. Or we hire somebody and we can't get them hired for three or four months, they got to go to work, and we lose them. And so, does that make sense to you guys?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. So I think I capture all the, the questions. So let me go through them. The, yes, you're correct. We're in a place right now where, well, we're always watching our budget and expenditures, but in particular, we need to get a handle on the personnel-related costs. And we're going to talk about why in, in a little bit. And we absolutely agree, it'll be a leadership team decision where we identify those priority areas, right? And I'll talk a little bit about how many FTE we want to pull in to get budgeted. You're absolutely right that, right now, as a result of needing to get a handle on that, we have told managers that we are scrutinizing and holding off on doing anything until we identify the essential critical priorities first. Those are big. For me, the exceptions to that are, we have somebody that we've tasked with doing work above and beyond their classification, we got to get them compensated for doing that. That's something I absolutely believe in. But that's fundamentally it, is we're watching, we need to budget out by division. But that's fundamentally it is, we're watching, we need to budget out by division, we need to fill essential positions first. And we need to ensure that um our managers are aware of what their budget capacity is to fill positions. Because in a nutshell, what would happen is, I have a staff of eight, but I have eleven positions, right? And so I want to fill the other three, so I'm going to work to fill them. While you have another manager that wants to fill their three and their three and their three and their three and they're pushing them all up to us. And then at some point, we get to a place in the fiscal year where we realize, whoa, we hired a whole bunch of people. We may need to do a bar so that we can make ends meet on payroll. While we can't wait till it gets to that place, we need to know in real time, here's what it's going to cost to pay everyone that's employed now. The balance of that and what we have available is going to be what we have to fill vacancies. And the vacancies that we fill are going to be critical. That's it. And as positions turn over, meaning somebody leaves, even those positions, we have to say, okay, if you don't need to fill that one or we have a more critical one over here, we're going to move it over here. Because it's just more essential here, right? And so we just need to start making those decisions at a high level. Otherwise, what, what's going to happen is, every single year, we're going to see the need to keep increasing our payroll, to shore it up. And that's just going to grow every year over and over again. And so-
Let me ask you another question. In our HR departments in the districts and at the GO, uh, and I know they're, they're different, but do we have a high turnover rate? I mean, are, I don't know, at the, I know the district, do we more or less in, at the district level, we're pretty consistent? Okay. And then what about the GO? I mean, do we have a lot of turnover there?
Yes, we have been working, Mr. Chairman, through a lot of transition in the GO HR.
Because that, that adds to all that because like, you lose somebody, they gotta come in, they gotta get trained and in the meantime, things start backing up.
Right, but I will say that is not what's contributing to the delay. Right now, we're trying to get a handle on the personnel.
So, so would you say then that the holdup is at Spoh?
No, nope. So, Mr. Chairman, the holdup is intentional. We need to get a handle on what we're doing.
This, this has been happening now for a couple of years. Now it were, it hit, it hit a, a dead end because now we have a budget to deal with. Before, we didn't have budget. And so what I'm saying is, has there been, is, I, I want to know if the holdup is, once it leaves the district, if it's in our area or if it's up at Spoh. I, I, that's-
It's at the GO.
And, Mr. Chairman, it also depends too on, I, I think there's a perception, and, and I'll just say this, and I think it's even important for managers to uh, to hear it is, there's a perception, right, that I'm going to ask to do this, it's, and, and it's going to be approved. And the rub becomes when the manager says, well, I approved it, I don't know what's taking so long. And that's not what happens now. What happens now is the manager doesn't approve it because for the most part, the manager's not aware of how much budget they have in their department to approve something. And so now it has to come through a budget check process and through HR and through Ms. Cooper. And fundamentally, we get to a place where like, well, we can't afford that action or that action is going to create imbalance in the pay structure or a number of other things, right? And so what we've got to do at some point is just say, that's not going to happen. It's not that it's taking a long time to process. We're not going to allow that to happen for the following reasons. But what happens up until that point is when a manager says, well, I approved that, I don't know why it's not done yet, right? Is it means that one of us somewhere is saying, holding it up. And I think that's the perception is that if we push an action forward, that if it doesn't get approved, it's because it's taking so long. But in some cases, it's not getting approved because of other reasons, right? But what we've got to do a better job of doing is saying, that action isn't going to occur. And so, but the other process, so what we've got to do is tell those division directors is, you can approve it by looking at your own budget now. If you don't have the budget with what to do that action, then you shouldn't submit the paperwork for it anymore. And now-
So let me ask you this. So you're saying, okay, along the lines you're saying, so if you, you look at your budget and I, I'm just using numbers, your three ma- your three, how many people are we short in roll right now? About three. So if they look at their budget and they don't have the money to fill those three positions, then, then what do we do?
So, Mr. Chairman, the first thing is, hasn't happened yet. There's a division that has three vacancies right now. There's a nine out of ten chance that they can't look at something and say, do I have the money?
No, no, but I'm saying when you go in, you're saying when we go into this, when you're going to allow them to look at their budget. So let's not go here, let's go into the, but into the era that you're saying.
Right.
So they look at their budget and they say, we only have a budget to hire one.
Right.
So there's two vacancies.
Correct.
So, how, do we have a contingency plan to how we're going to fill that out? Because I'm telling you, once we start hitting snow, and, and, and it's not only going to impact the snow, and, and I want to bring this up at the end, so mowing, there's weeds taller than me everywhere.
Yeah.
And, and, and so it's impacting there. Do we have the personnel to be mowing? Do we have the equipment to be mowing? Because that, that jumps into another thing with budget and, and our equipment and stuff. So, uh, I get where you're going with, okay, look at your budget and see if you can hire. But if we can't and we have a bad snowstorm, then how are we going to, we need a contingency plan to see how we're going to fill it out. Now, we have special crews out there. We have heavy maintenance crew, we have a chip ceiling crew, we have a carpentry crews. Some places they have other different crews. And, and all those crews, when I was there, okay, we would, we would bring in the chip ceiling crew home. And we had all their trucks outfitted with plows and blades and everything. We left the, the heavy maintenance crew up on the I forty and they were all outfitted with stuff. And so that gave us, on, in, in Vegas, that gave us an extra six to seven trucks. On I forty, that gave us an, another eight to nine trucks. And that helps out to send these other trucks. And now with vacancies, and I'll get into something else. Last year, I got a call at one of our patrols, there was only one truck and they were in the middle of a snowstorm and they were one of the worst. And sure enough, they were all in the shop. So it, and that, in that case, it wasn't a vacancy. It was more equipment. And so that's, that's another thing that we've got to tackle, but not on, under this. But I'll, I'll mention it at the end. So, uh, I, I'm just, I'm just concerned that if we're not doing a lot of stuff now, plus added these emergencies that we're having with floods and fires and everything else, we're going to have to have a plan to continue to, uh, you know, I'm, I'm driving by and I'm seeing signs, these big signs and the wind's blowing off the faces and six months later, they're, they haven't been replaced. I see signs that are leaning this way. Two months later, they're still leaning, uh, and, and tell me this, have you seen the signs? I don't even know if we're doing this anymore, reflectivity. I don't know, are the districts doing reflectivity? All of them, because I've seen a lot of signs where you can't even read them. And, and so that's why I'm more concerned about these vacancies. I mean, if we're not even doing it now, when we have vacancies filled, what are we going to do?
Yeah, Mr. and Ms. Chairman, that was going to be my point actually, is if you go back to the slide before, we're running out of excuses. Look it. If it's getting worse, those things that you just talked about weeds and sign being replaced and things, if it's getting worse, it can't be because of vacancies. The vacancy rate has gone down by six percent. And so again, if you had a criticism earlier, listen, we need better communication. If I turn to you and just say like, well, it's-
Criticism, it was uh-
Correct. But it, it's something we committed to doing. If I were to turn to you and say, well, it's because of the vacancies, what would your response be? All of you. It's not an excuse, especially when I come up here and put a table that shows where we have one of the most competitive vacancy rates for an agency our size. And so to answer your question, it is if you call a district engineer that you believe can do better in some areas and your district engineer says, well, it's because of the vacancies, that's an excuse. Do we have some trouble areas?
So let me jump to the next one, equipment. Is that an excuse?
The equipment is absolutely our funding gap in equipment. You know that, Mr. Chairman, and that's something that we go after every single year. And so if you go back to the next slide, you got to see what's happening here that's eating us alive. Sixty-eight million dollar increase. Typically, for every other agency in the state, when the legislature issues a legislative increase, they also, that agency receives a portion of what it's estimated to cost that, for that increase, right? And so you go in, you say, okay, HSD, we're going to give a three percent increase. That's going to cost you twenty million dollars. The legislature is then going to give them a percentage of that twenty million dollars to help HSD pay for those pay increases. You look at health insurance premiums. The big swap took place with the Healthcare Act. We estimate now that the change alone for this fiscal year is going to cost eight million dollars. So that sixty-eight million, eight of it is coming from just that one shift in health insurance premiums, right? And so when you add these things up, three percent increase, three percent increase, four percent increase, swap to longevity, change to health coverage, all those things, those are the major drivers in what's contributing to that thirty-six percent pay increase, right?
Plus, let me get to this. Our budget wasn't passed this year, as you know.
Right. Our legislative requests.
And so, so are all our legislative requests, that's going to lead, then to that.
Yep.
Plus, all the projects that we have ongoing now, we're running on, on fumes right now because we do have projects going and it looks like we're doing a lot of work. But all those are going to end pretty soon. They're coming to an end. And, and that's because that was from previous funding. So, where does that leave us?
That's it. And that's the-
And I know you're, we're trying to address it in the upcoming session, but if it doesn't get addressed, come January, where are we going to be?
And, Mr. Chairman, and I think Commissioner McElroy will attest, that's exactly the story we've been telling for the last two years to the legislature. Is we get what's happening with one-time appropriations, right? That two hundred and fifty-six million dollars that it costs just for payroll, that represents fifty percent of the entire state road fund. Just to staff the agency. And if we don't do something to grow the revenues into the state road fund, which we tried to do by seventy-two million this last session, you're going to see a lot of staff with no resources to do the maintenance, to purchase the equipment, to manage the construction projects, right? And so it's this shuffle game. Let's just say, for example, we didn't grow in payroll. We're still paying a hundred and eighty-eight million like we were back in twenty-twenty-two. Let's just say we then dump sixty-eight million dollars in equipment every single year or maintenance. Or that might get us twenty miles of new construction. The problem is going to grow and grow and grow and grow. And we tell this story to legislature every single time. And the, what makes us unique is that they don't have a tool for just increasing our recurring revenue at the Department of Transportation. And when they give us one-time appropriations every year, we can't take that money, dump it into state road fund and use it for staff. Because if we were to do that, the next year, we wouldn't have it to pay those staff because it's only a one-time appropriation. And so Chairman, you hit the nail on the head is, if the legislature doesn't see this growing problem and find a way to fund the increases that they legislate and put into law and find a mechanism for increasing our recurring state road fund revenue, we're going to have staff without the resources to do the work. And we've been telling this story at least for three years since I've been here. Every single year, we've tried swapping motor excise tax. We've had legislators increase fuel tax. We are, we put a bill together for bonding the projects and paying for the debt service with existing debt service and growing state road fund with increased registration fees, weight distance tax, EV surcharge. We've tried it all almost. We spent a summer studying the issue. And so you take that thirty-six million, thirty-six percent, sixty-eight percent increase added to the growing cost of doing work in construction. And I've said this publicly is, we're doing twenty-five percent less work today than we were five years ago. So Chairman, to your point is, we can afford to do twenty-five percent less weeds, twenty-five percent less construction, twenty-five percent less chip ceiling, twenty-five percent less of everything that has risen by twenty-five percent since twenty-twenty. And we tell that story to no avail. And that's what's hurting the agency right now. Something has to be done.
And this commission took that into account with the vacancies. And that's why we asked you not to fill our admin position that we had. And we, we then asked for Tammy to double up duty and so that we, we don't add another that, because really, that's a non-essential for us.
True.
You know, we're, we're not, we don't use it. It's not a full time that we use. We get ready for meetings and stuff. It's not a full time. So we're going to do our part to help put that vacancy back into an essential position.
And so again, Mr. Chairman, the vacancy rate, you'll see it better than it's been in years and years and years. We have people, we retain them. And, and I'm asking our managers in front of you all is that not to use it as an excuse for the things that we don't do because you pointed already to some things that we can do from a strategy perspective across districts, across patrols, across crews to get the work done. But you know, like I know, that, you know, if we have things that we got to get done, we can't stand around and say why it didn't get done. We just got to figure out a way to do it. And so my hope is that the answer to why we didn't do something isn't going to be our vacancies because it just means that, you know, we were really bad two years ago. If our vacancy rate has improved by four percent in the past three years, I can't imagine how terrible a job we were doing three years ago.
For, I, I uh, for our next meeting that we have, when is it, September?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth. Um, I would like to be on the agenda for discussion and approval. And I think with all the things that we have going on right now, we have, we have the border connector, we have this, we have that. We have, we're going to start running into this thing with vacancies and all that. I want to put on there for discussion and, and action that this commission start meeting monthly. And, and instead of every, bi-weekly, because by the time, I mean, by month, by monthly, every time, if we're meeting two months in between, I don't think we're getting the, we can't, we can't be a resource to help solve some of these problems. And then all the stuff that we're getting, it's already two months old. And so I think at this, it's, it's going to get critical. Don't you think? That we're going to, it's going to get tougher and it's going to get tighter. And in order for us to continue to do due diligence to this state of New Mexico, uh, I think that we need to uh, to start meeting monthly and getting the updates and seeing where we're going and how budgets are doing, how vacancies are doing, how our projects are doing. Because I think we're at a critical stage right now. And it's not a panic stage, it's a critical stage. And then I think at that point, I think what we're going to do is, I would like to hear from all the DEs at every meeting and give a report on your, I'd like to see how much is getting mowed, uh, secondary interstates, uh, what we're doing uh with our EV chargers. I'd like to get updates on that because we come and we approve millions of dollars and then oh, like today, we got a request, you know, to increase it, but we'd like to see, are they, where are they being installed? Are they all installed forty percent complete? I think we need to get a handle on equipment to see where we're at with the equipment, to see if, if, do we need more mowers? Do we need, do we don't need mowers? Do we need more whatever we're, we're doing? And so I think this is a time to bring everybody, give a, a report. And, and not a report on, not a report on that we give up here when we go to each district, just like what, what's going on. Another thing, projects. I never hear like uh, of all the projects that were going on, it could be real brief and say, we have this project going on uh, and it's seventy-two percent complete. Is, is it on time, on budget? Is it going to conclude like at the end of uh, whenever? Just so that we know, so everybody's on the same page. And I don't know if the other commissioners agree, but we'll discuss it at the September meeting and we can put it on there. Because I think that instead of calling special meetings and all that, there's a lot of stuff right now. We got that loan that Las Lunas is requesting. And so we're going to have to sit down and talk about that. And, and it's not, it seems that every time we show up here, it's like, can we need approval for this? We need approval for that. And I think we need time to digest everything, work together so that we can solve all this and we can be a resource to lobby or do whatever we can do and it helps- and we can be a resource to lobby or do whatever we can do and it helps you guys plan out better and give us the information we need, so when you do come up with a request, that we're all burst and, and we're ready to roll. But like I said, the vacancies are, are a concern to me, because I've been out there, I've worked out there, and I know what it is to be shorthanded on a snowstorm or to be shorthanded when you got to go to an emergency and stuff of that nature. And the other thing is on equipment, I think it's important to see if we're ordering the right, the right equipment or the, when I first got on the commission, and even before I got on the commission, I had brought up a thing to where we would have a group in each district, not AMSs, operators, and we would form a group, and they could sit down and recommend to the equipment managers what equipment we need, what's not working, what's working. I know one year, I don't know if you remember, Rick, we ordered a bunch of mowers and they were all, they all, it was just a bad batch. And so they were breaking down and they were brand new. You remember those? And, and so where do we get that feedback from the operators? And so when they tried to put that group together, they jumped the gun and they went and put the AMS, AMSs are not operating equipment. It's the operators that are operating, they can give you the feedback of what trucks we use is, if it's Champion's, if it's John Deere, whatever it is. And then the other thing is, and something we have to look at is when I, when they say everything's in the shop, most of the things that go to the shop end up here in Albuquerque. They, they don't go to our shop, they, for whatever reason, I don't know if it's the warranty and stuff of that nature. And then the other thing that we were looking at was, and I don't know if it's still happening, we get new equipment in and they deliver it. And then it sits in the yard, because they got to put lights and they got to do this and that. By the time you get it, it could be six months later, seven months later, the warranty's running and stuff. So I, I think this is a good chance for us to come in here and discuss all those things and, and, and we don't have to hurry and rush and that sort. I think that's all I have. I don't know if anybody else has anything to say.
Well, I know I would certainly appreciate having some KPIs that we are keeping an eye on, and we could come up with those together at our next meeting perhaps, but just to have some comparison, because it's hard to understand where we're at with just hearing raw numbers or data that's fed to us without, and I really appreciate the charts and graphs that you created for the vacancies. That's the kind of thing, if we could figure out something that's reasonable, that indicates progress towards construction, towards maintenance, towards equipment, towards personnel, that kind of stuff. What are the key KPIs that would be useful for this body to then support the department? Because if we're a policy and budget approving body, we need to be able to do that in a way that's really informed and meaningful. And so while I appreciate the information that we've been given to date, I do think it's important to have comparisons and to be able to say, you know, what are our goals year-to-date and how are we, are we meeting them or are we not? And how do we, where are the room, where's the room for improvement and how can we support that? Thank you.
Absolutely.
We used to have those goals and I think we still do, where we submit them to the legislature, trash, and all of everything I mentioned, and it all goes over there and it tells you if you're meeting or not meeting, and it goes into the report like you're saying, and you can look at it and say, you know, plus, and don't get me wrong, I understand if there's emergencies, like when we had the fires, yeah, we weren't mowing, of course we couldn't, we had all our guys out there. But on a regular basis, it's good to see how many, how many miles are your chips sealed? There was a time when we had a big budget and we could do 300, 400 lane miles. We can't anymore because oil went up, aggregate went up, and so, but it's good to see where everybody's at, just to, just to come in here and compare notes. And so I think we're at that stage where, where we just need to slow down, take our time, come in and discuss all these, all these things. And, and, and I think the vacancy is going to be big as, as we move forward, not as of today, but as we move forward. And so I think, I don't, I think that, I don't have any more questions on the vacancy. I think we know where we're headed and I think that's what you wanted, Commissioner McElroy.
You haven't touched on the last slide.
Yep.
I don't believe in it, I'd like you to kind of go through that.
Okay. So here's the, the strategies, right? That was kind of like the challenges. So one is what I mentioned, the division-based budgeting, right? And so the idea of a district engineer looking at its different divisions and saying, okay, listen, I, I lost somebody at this patrol. If I lost somebody at that patrol, I obviously have the budget for that position, so I can fill it, right? That's, that's the way it's going to work with existing field positions. Then they're going to go to a division where they're going to say, well, I don't have anybody there today, can I get an FTE to fill it? And that's where the question of how critical that position is becomes, right? How critical is that position? And so that's the, going to be the discussion that happens at that manager level to say, I don't really have that FTE, but I really need it. I'm going to need to elevate that to my DE, I'm going to need to elevate that to our deputy secretary, and I'm going to request that this position be critical and it be given funding to be filled. That's the process that we're going to be able to roll out when we base the budget on a division. Then what we'll tell that division is, you can fill it and here's the money, we're moving it into your division budget so that you can fill it. And then the manager can go out there and fill it. Now, from time to time, there's going to be a manager who's going to say, well, I got a position, it became vacant, I don't want to fill it. I want to use that budget for, to increase the pay of my existing workers, if it's appropriate, right? And I know that if I do that, I'm not going to have the budget to fill the vacancy later. But that's the decision that the manager can make when we give them the information that they need, right? The other piece of the strategy is we have to hold our vacancy rate to 12%. So you know now we're just under 15. So we're doing some budget projections and we're hopeful that we can bring it down another 3%, right? And so what does that equate to? That'll equate to something like 60 positions. And if you start to spread that across the agency, you're going to say, how do we spread that 50 to 60 positions around the state in a critical way? And that's going to be part of the next steps, and that's going to be a leadership team process, right? There you see it, funding critical vacancies and personnel actions. It's got to be tied directly to what we do as an organization and essential positions are, are kind of the core of all that. We also have some other things that we need to address, their policy development around comp time accruals and balances. We had some policy gaps in staff's ability, especially falsa exempt staff, to accrue a lot of comp time. And then what would happen at some point throughout the fiscal year is they would come and say, can I cash out my comp time? And in some cases, that might be 20 hours or a thousand bucks, and some other cases, it might be 160 hours at $18,000, depending on how much they get paid. And so when you add that to other liabilities, like somebody retires and we have to cash out their leave, or somebody moves from one, from falsa exempt to non-exempt and we have to cash out their leave, all of these things chip away, right? And then we also even started monitoring the extent to which we're compliant with our shoe and clothing allowance, to make sure that that doesn't get out of control, right? For folks that aren't in the field on a regular basis too. And then we're working on a strategy, I shouldn't say we, as much as David Quintana and his team is working on a strategy, we're appropriate to shift from the state road fund to federal funds, freeing up more state road fund for other positions that don't work exclusively on federal, federalized projects, right? But essentially, the long-term measure here is this, because this problem is going to persist, even if we hold firm right this second. Because that 68 million bucks, let's just say we haven't increased by that much, that's just two legislative increases away, right? And so even if we were to just stop hiring people right now, and the legislature gives another 3% in January, that's going to cost us what roughly? How much? $6 million, just boom, just to pay them an extra 3%. And so what we've got to do over time, imagine that's happened over the past four years, it's $24 million roughly in pay increases. Add that to 8 million in just the healthcare change, that's $32 million in just legislative shifts in personnel costs. And other agencies would have received a percentage of that to help defray those costs, right? So the long-term measures, we need to create a mechanism for funding legislative increases and other funded personnel initiatives on a recurring basis. So we need to create that door that says, we know DOT is unique, they don't get recurring general fund, but if we legislate something that we know is just taking money out of roads, can we backfill them some way? Like, can we just say, here's the door, we're giving every other agency that money, we should give them that money too, because we know two things, their state road fund revenue is going to go down from here, well, from 2030 it's going to go down, and the cost of doing construction and maintenance is going through the roof. And now we're giving that $256 million to run their payroll, we're going to add to that by giving this percent increase. And you all know, based on some of the initiatives, this administration, certainly me, I'm adamant about paying our employees competitively. I'm adamant about giving them what they need to stay. And that chart that we showed you says, we're doing a good job doing that right now. But over the long haul, there are some compounding external forces that's going to make that very unsustainable into the future.
We might, we might also have to look at travel and all that other stuff, because that all goes into the budget and you might have to use, I know they're two different funds, but you might have to hold off on travel in order to get a vacancy somewhere.
Well, Mr. Chairman, along those lines, something that's going to be even more immediate, and we've had divisions already propose this to us, is they're going to say, hey, if you just give me two or three positions, that's going to cost me 300,000 bucks, I won't have to use this on call, which is costing us 600,000 bucks, right? And so those are the things we want to see, but the challenge, as you mentioned, is how do I get the money from the 300 category to the 200 category on a regular basis, which is kind of like a no-no, right? But those are the shifts we'd like to see in personnel costs to say, we're relying more on consultants and on calls, and maybe some of them are going to cover their ears. But if we ramp up with enough staff that we don't need to rely on them as much, then we need to move those savings into the 200 category so that we can actually staff up with, with classified employees.
Well, I'll tell you this, I've been here almost 50 years and I've seen it all, and I've even been, I think John was still part of the, the DOT when we got to a point where we were looking at RIFs, and they talked about RIFs, and we never got there, and we were at reduction in force, so they were going to have to start laying off people. And I was there leaving it, because they talked, do you remember that, John? Or you weren't here?
They'd been gone already.
Yeah.
I left when they started the furloughs.
Yeah. So they started a lot of stuff. We've been able to avoid all that, and I still think we can. I don't think we're in, we're in emergency mode, but I think we're in, in caution mode. And I think that we need to do, this commission with you and your staff, need to get together to try to figure out solutions, to try to keep us not, not only afloat, but delivering the quality service that we deliver each and every day. And I know it's going to impact, but people don't understand all this legislative stuff and all these numbers we talk about here. What they understand is there's no potholes, aren't being filled, weeds aren't being cut, guardrail isn't being fixed, and their signs are falling down, and so, and, and we can sit here and say, we don't have a budget to replace, we don't have vacancies to do it, but it's not, it's not going to be, they're not going to buy it. So we got to just do our best to do what we can with what we have, if that makes sense. But we can only do it if we're meeting and we're doing things and we're all talking about it and we're going over different scenarios. And like I said, every two months, it's like, we're in crucial mode sometimes with stuff, or things need to get signed. And so we say, well, we don't have the information, we're not going to do it. Like this border thing, it's coming up quick, and we're going to have to sit down and talk about it. So I, and so what I'm saying, to put it on the agenda for discussion, the discussion at that time will be that we do, so in other words, we will, we would have our regular meeting in September. We might have to have another special one on this border connector, but then we would meet again in October. And my, my recommendation or my suggestion is going to be that we meet in October. Then we have a regular meeting in, in November, and then we meet again in December. But I would say that all the meetings that haven't already been designated, would, my, my suggestion at that time, when we meet, would be that they all be here in Albuquerque, which is a central meeting place. And, and, and that way, it's easier for people to travel and it doesn't cause too much chaos. And, and so with that, is there any other questions for?
Yeah, I do, I have some questions.
Okay.
You have on your, on your slide here, holding vacancy rates at 12%. So you have a district, you have districts now that are at 7%. So you're essentially telling those districts that you can't fill anything. Is that, is that accurate or what are you?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, no, it's not, but it's going to be a challenge. If you have a district with 6% and one at 18%, they're averaging the 12% between the two of them, right? And so we'll work with those districts on critical positions, but I think this is kind of where, you know, I, I, I ask a DE, when is the last time you've had a vacancy rate that low? I mean, can you guys remember a time before? I mean, for a district with 300 employees, that's 21 vacancies across the district, right? That's remarkable. And if you have, you know, 12 patrols in your district or 13 patrols, on average, that's, you know, less than two people. And I'm not saying that that's not critical, but I am saying that, and this is coming from experience, having overseen the state personnel office with this person to my left is, we don't know a state agency, an executive one, with more than 200 employees probably that can, that can get to 10% or afford to get to 10%. The problem is, is that we're unique, there's good unique and bad unique. We're unique in that if we wanted to, we could fill every single position. We just have to say so. We have to figure out where the budget will come from, like maintenance or equipment or wherever, we just have to figure out from where it'll come. But we are in charge of that, right? When we build our budget, we could go to the legislature in January and say, we need to grow payroll by another 40 million. Why? We're going to fill every single position. They're going to balk at that. They're going to first say that they don't think we can do it. But secondly, they're going to say, well, what is that money going to take away from? It's, what's it going to take away from litter pickup? It's going to take away from these other things. And so the, one of the first things I look at is say, you already have a really good vacancy rate. Why don't you just use prioritization of vacancies? Fill the critical masses through attrition, move budget around and fill what you got to have filled. But if D1, for example, or D6 is another one, we're not trying to like punish good behavior. If they have a critical engineer position or a critical patrol situation that they need to get a position filled, then we'll put it there. But to be sure, if they're at that rate, my bet is they're in pretty good shape. Whereas another district or another department, right? Not just a district, right? Like we got, you know, our infrastructure group and our planning group, research, we have our materials lab, where you're going to go and you're going to say, a vacancy rate of 20%. We're going to say, if, if it comes down to like this one and D1 and three over here for materials lab, then we have to have a conversation about saying, where, where is this gap going to put us versus where this gap is going to put us?
Any other questions?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Ricky, thank you for all the information. You keep bringing up the legislature and that's a, I guess, the place to start. Do we have people from the agency or you guys, do you lobby these legislators to tell them our needs to what the Department of Transportation needs to, to perform their duties beyond, you know, than the norm, I guess, for lack of a better term? We've got things that are happening, floods, snow came up, vacancies, competition. Is there somebody that carries the banner for the DOT that says, this is a good thing that's respected, that's, that's trusted with these budgets? Because it seems like we're, we're going to have a lot of, the environment department was like this many years ago too. We had lots of people, but we didn't have any gas, you know, we didn't have a vehicle, we didn't have sampling equipment. And we got out of that vacancy rate savings, what have you. What, what's going on on that side of the fence? I mean, we, we can't keep doing this, we've got to do something else, it sounds like to me. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Lundstrom, that's, I don't know, 80% of our, our collective time as, as a senior management group is spent in the interim committees where it really ramps up, in, during the 30, 60-day session, like 95% of our time is spent there entirely, but especially during the interim. You all likely know that there's a committee that's fundamentally committed to us, right? As an organization, the Transportation Infrastructure Revenue Subcommittee. And we present regularly in front of Legislative Finance Committee, which you know is a combination of House Appropriations and Senate Finance Committee members, you know, for the, for the session. And I, I think, to answer your question too, we're blue in the face, we're doing this. The, again, there's Um, uh, the, again, there's really a couple of options here. One of them is you increase the revenues that we receive. Those are all road user charges. That's gas tax, that's weight distance, that's vehicle registration, that's, you know, excise, it's all of those things, right? And, or it's create new revenue streams, right? Which means that you're creating another way to tax people or generate revenue. And those are difficult conversations to have, because in the backdrop of all of that is like a gajillion dollars, right? Everybody's talking about a very good financial position the state is in. The hard part about just saying, okay, we're going to give DOT like $30 billion tomorrow is anytime you appropriate a special appropriation like that, the DOT will have three years in which to use it. And then it either has to be reauthorized or it rebverts. And the liability in doing that, so for example, since 2019, we've been appropriated 3.1 billion dollars. Do I have that right? 2.3 billion, I, I'm getting all my numbers, but anyway. Billions of dollars for special projects, right? Construction, maintenance, Commissioner McElroy saw the figures, we had a table in front of committee. It's just a phenomenal amount of money. But then they appropriate it, it's for construction, it's for maintenance, it's for wildlife quarters, it's for EV, it's for this, it's for that. And then we have three years to burn that money. And so we've obligated or spent 97% of that funding going back to 2019. We burned through that money for projects, but the challenge is still, every year, we get about $250 million for the state road fund. And you saw in Michael's presentation that with some degree, it fluctuates, plus or minus 8 to 10 million dollars, right? But to intentionally increase it by tens of millions of dollars, you have to touch those levers. And those levers are road user fees. And going back since the first session I've been at with DOT, we have made attempts to turn those levers and increase revenue. And the closest we ever got was last year, when that 72 million of new money was just one vote away from becoming law. On top of a billion and a half of projects, over 10 years. And so we talk, we come up with the ideas, we draft the bills, we get the governor to lean in on them, and we work the heck out of it. But I will say that last year's failure to get that bill wasn't a lack of effort on anybody's part in this.
Why, why, why do you think it's, we're coming up zero?
Mr. Chairman, I wish I knew.
Well.
I think, I think part of the problem, and it's been that way for, for a long time. Uh, I mean, you have secretaries going back 25, 30 years that have done a lot of the same things that you're doing now, Rick. Uh, and the whole issue, the biggest issue is we're not a general fund agency. We're a road fund agency, that's how we're, that's how we're funded. And quite frankly, there's a lot of, uh, uh, there still is amongst legislators, whether new or older legislators, who don't totally understand that concept. And, you know, we've got to fight that fight all the time, every year. And we've not always successful in, uh, I mean, we've, we've been able to get the big bonding programs a few times in the mid 90s and then also in the early 2000s.
2003.
And, and that's how we've, uh, been able to get a lot of things done from a construction standpoint. And then over the last few years, you've been able to get some one-time or one-year increases in monies for the department, I believe. And, uh, you've had those successes. But it's awfully difficult, uh, you know, kind of selling the legislatures on, on, you know, hey, we're not going to get any of, uh, you know, the money that you're putting here in the general fund. You know, we're going to get the money that we're, the revenues we're getting from the road fund. And now we're running into the problem, you know, we're telling people, you know, we haven't gotten a gas tax increase in, you know, since the mid 90s. Well, you know, I mean, you go to the different parties in the legislature, whether the Republicans, they don't, they don't want to hear about more taxes. You know, their, their solution to this, well, let's create a fund. Let's create a, a revenue fund, you know, we create a children's fund for education. Let's create a, a road fund for education. Well, that's all well and good. Uh, the problem is that there, there's a conflict between one party and the other party. One party saying gas tax, one party saying road fund. And at some point in time, you know, that has to be resolved and, and come up with something. But it, it just hasn't happened. I mean, the, the increase with the weight distance and excise and what you were going to, what we were hoping to get this last year, the 72 million, you know, I think that would have, that would have gone a long ways to, to helping the department. Uh, but that's, I think that's kind of the, the big issue. It's an education issue every year, all the time with the legislature. And, and a lot of the problem goes back to the fact that we're a road fund, we're funded through the road fund. We're not funded through the general fund. So that's, I think that's, it's just a hard deal that, that people have gone through for, for years. I mean, I've seen it, I mean, I've been up there in the legislature in the 2000s. I mean, just every year, I was seven years as a district engineer. I mean, every year was a new, new cell. You know, it's just like reeducated every year. And it's, it's just a hard thing to go through, but that's, you know, you know, we, we can, we should have gotten it this year. I mean, it just doesn't make sense to me how you can sit there four or five days before the end of the legislature and you've gone through the committee in the House, you know, no, no no votes, they all voted for it. You went through the Senate committees, they all voted for it except for one person, uh, because of an E V issue. So it's sitting there, ready to go on the Senate floor. And, you know, it went on the House floor, 100% support, nobody voted against it. It goes to the Senate floor, I mean, it can be passed just on party lines. There shouldn't, it wouldn't have been a problem. You have to go back and kind of resolve things between the two houses and, and get it to the governor's desk. I mean, there's plenty of time to do it, but, you know, something intervened there to where that wasn't a priority. And it's a frustrating thing, but I mean, that's, that's just the, the way things work in the roundhouse or anyplace else. You know, any other capital, I mean, it's just the way it goes. I mean, you've got to, you've got to give and take on anything. And that's how any law gets, gets passed, it's a compromise. But that's, you know, neither here nor there, I guess that's my, my best shot at kind of explaining it. Uh, one of the other things I wanted to mention, I mean, Walter's talking about, or Commissioner Adam, Chairman Adams is talking about these monthly meetings and, and having district engineers present. I would recommend, or I suggest to the district engineers and, and Deputy Secretary, uh, Mo, that, uh, to kind of come up with a, a format, one format, present it by the districts, not six different formats. If they can come up with one format, um, and, I mean, there can be, uh, subtle changes or whatever by, whatever a district engineer presents. But just one format, I guess, if there's some way the six district engineers can get together and, and, uh, and develop that. And then something, something that's relatively not, not too lengthy and not too, uh, uh, I guess, not a lot of, not a lot of, uh, uh, glitz and glamour to it, kind of a.
We, what I guess, Commissioner, informative, if we wanted to be informative. And so when you're saying format, it's very simple to come up with some of the things that, the things that we're submitting to the legislature, trash, uh, the mowing. And it, it, you can develop the format and, and, and that way, when you come up, you can say, uh, District 19 did 30, 300, mowed 300 miles on the interstate. And we did 250 on the, on the secondary roads. Uh, and, and just, just a chart and then we'll, we'll, we'll add. And then I think, uh, if we can identify and, and actually, Commissioner McElroy, if I can have you work with Mo and come up with that format on what you think is essential, uh, that would, that would be good.
Well, I mean, I can, I can provide some.
Yeah.
Comments.
Yeah.
Comments, I think it's up to the district engineers and Mo to develop it, I mean.
And, and this is something that we want to work on all together. So if the D Es have input, we're, we're willing to hear how we want to do it. The other thing I'd like to get some feedback on is that the governor has, uh, green initiatives. And I want to see where we're at with the equipment, to see where we're at and if we're moving towards, uh, going green. Uh, the only green vehicle I've seen is the one you drive sometimes. And other than that, I, I don't see any green. And, and it'd actually be good to even get a report from the equipment manager as to what they're ordering and what's essential. And, and that's not all in the same day. Is there going to be, you know, that we're, we're spreading it out? And that way, when we do have our regular scheduled meeting that we had already, we're going to get all the public in here and we're going to get all them in making their requests and stuff. And then on the other meetings, we can talk about all this other, other stuff, uh, and so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just in closing, say, I mean, we're open to that and the support and everybody moving in the right direction. And, um, you know, just to be clear with everyone, by design, we are making sure that before we start approving and pulling the trigger on personnel actions, hires or comp actions in general, we got to get some things in order first. And so by design right now, and probably for the last four months, we have made sure to scrutinize and scrutinize every single action. That's us, doing our due diligence. And so I don't want anybody to confuse that with a hiring freeze or a, you know, oh, oh, we're going to go in the opposite direction, we're not growing, we're getting smaller. It's not that at all. It's getting increasingly responsible with, um, how we manage our personnel budget, given that over time, there's been a lot of generous measures on the part of the executive, on the part of the legislature to support state workers, all things that I agree very much with. We just now need to create on the backend a mechanism for supporting those with state investments and so, thank you.
I think it's more coming up with a contingency plan, hoping we never get there. But if we do, we're doing safeguards in between so that if there's any impact, the impact will be very, very slight. Oh, like I said, I don't want anybody to think that we're in a, we're in a critical or crucial situation. I just want to say we're in a cautionary situation. Uh, I think it's better to be safe than sorry. And I think that's why we want to meet. And then since we do go over the budget and we approve things, we can have a saying, you know, but we can listen to you and you can recommend and we can come, come together and say, what do we need to do to, to keep everything flowing? So with that, uh, is there any other, uh, comments, questions or anything else from this commission? Before we adjourn, I want to thank everybody for being here today, I appreciate it. Uh, I want to congratulate and thank Commissioner Chiniew for being here today. She has a son that will be getting married on Saturday and one, Friday. And so I want to congratulate you and have the best of luck and thank you for being here today. Although you're, I know you're in the party and planning and stages.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. With that, is there any other business or anyone else to come before this commission? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn at 11:52?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion from Commissioner Lundstrom. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tanjes, can I get a roll call vote?
Chairman Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner McElroy?
Yes.
Commissioner Tanjes?
Yes.
Commissioner Chiniew?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Maybe.
We are officially adjourned.
Commissioner Lundstrom.
Yes.